Everyone got so quiet so quick. Thank you. All right, it is now 6:32 and I'll now call to order this meeting of the City Council of Lancaster, Pennsylvania for May 9th, 2023. Couple of reminders here at the top of the meeting for everybody. This is an excellent opportunity to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed, so if you're in this room, you may be recorded. And third, if you're making public comment this evening, please do so at the podium and address to council. Begin your comments with your name and your block of residence for the meeting record, and comments are limited to no longer than three minutes per speaker, per topic. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Men.
Here.
Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Gleese.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Here.
And President Beckett.
Here.
Now we'll move to the approval of the minutes of the April 25th, 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second for the meeting minutes. Any council comments on the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye. Our first item now is the proclamation honors and awards of, um, excuse me, awards and resolutions of recognition. Do we have any this evening, Mr. Harris?
Yes, we do, Madam President. First, we have Council Resolution Number 31. A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster recognizing May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month, the contributions of the Jewish people of Lancaster, and decrying the rise of antisemitism in our nation.
So here are motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the resolution this evening. We introduced this at our committee meeting this month, and I was proud to do so. The Jewish American Heritage Month Resolution recognizes the contribution of Jewish Americans in Lancaster, and also decries acts of antisemitism both locally and nationally, which unfortunately have been on the rise. I will take any other council comments on the motion, and I know that we do have a speaker here for us as well. Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to echo the comments that are incorporated in the resolution, and we know that our Jewish American neighbors represent a very small portion of our community but are overrepresented in the number of hate crimes that they experience. And when you ask the average American whether or not hate crimes against Jewish Americans are really a thing, they often reply that, "No, it's not that big of an issue." Well, that's not the case, and this is part of what inspired, I think, us to bring this to the attention of council to pass this resolution. And I just want to, at this point, acknowledge Miriam, who is here, who has been a stalwart partner at the city in celebrating Hanukkah each year and continuing to elevate. I will also just say that, you know, it's very shocking when you arrive at the doors of the synagogue and you are greeted with an armed guard. And that is the way that it is here in Lancaster because of the heinous acts of violence against Jewish Americans. And so let us not forget that this is part of our community as well. We want to lift up and celebrate our Jewish American neighbors, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. And Miriam, I'd like to invite you up to address council at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi.
I was gonna say, look for the little red light. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. I am Miriam Baumgartner. I am the board president of the Jewish Community Alliance of Lancaster. Simon Wiesenthal, the late Nazi hunter, once said, "For evil to flourish, it only requires good men to do nothing." In current times, I would change "men" to "people." Tonight, the good people of the Lancaster City Council are not doing nothing. On behalf of the Jewish community in Lancaster, I thank you for your action in recognizing our community. Lancaster's value of acceptance of others is the fertile ground that allowed the development of and continues to support a strong Jewish community here. We thank you for this proclamation acknowledging May as Jewish American Heritage Month. And Mayor Sarachi, armed guards, this is not limited to Lancaster, it is nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye. At this time, I do have a presentation copy of the resolution, Ms. Baumgartner, that I would like to present to you. I'll come down. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Madam President. Resolution Number 35. A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster recognizing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and the contributions with which Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have made to the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, another incredibly important resolution that I was proud to introduce this month for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We have a strong contingent here in support of this resolution and an active AAPI community here in Lancaster. I think it's important, and it was highlighted in the resolution, that this group led vaccination efforts during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. And those efforts are incredibly important and were offered to a very vulnerable population, and so it was really key in getting people vaccinated in Lancaster. So I wanted to specifically call that out, and thank you for those efforts. I'll take other council comments on the resolution.
If I may, President.
Council Diaz.
Some people forget how many Asian Americans or Asians that came here from the war and basically were enslaved by the railroad. They also did a lot of work in the areas where the coal mines were. So those are things that people forget, but I generally don't forget and really want to thank you and your family that had to endure those atrocities.
Thank you, Council Diaz.
Council President, if I may.
Councilor Ahmed.
I just wanted to thank the AAPI of Lancaster. It's just been very moving to see them get organized and mobilize the community here, everything from the Lunar New Year events to, you know, everything that they're doing. It's not unnoticed.
Thank you. Mayor Sarachi, oh, sorry. Councilor Royo.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to recognize the AAPI group of Lancaster. I think when we look in the back, we see a lot of community leaders as individuals, but it's really cool to see the impact that they've been making as a collective. So thank you for being here tonight.
Mayor Sarachi.
Well, just to echo all of that, it's been wonderful, really so joyous to see all of the events and to know that when we celebrated Lunar New Year for the very first time in downtown Lancaster in Yule Plaza, it was on the heels of a really horrific tragedy, and it felt especially sweet to gather together, together as a community, to be with one another and to celebrate. And so to all of you, and individually and collectively, you are a lot of bright lights in the city, and we appreciate your efforts to organize and to connect our cultures. And I think that you have been, you have created an atmosphere of welcome to connect many cultures within the AAPI community as well as beyond, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. At this time, if you would like to, I would like to welcome Sophie Shong to the podium.
Thank you. I grew up in Township and Hempfield, and I graduated from Hempfield in 2006, but I always found that the city provided me a place where I could feel a little safer without feeling like I would be singled out. I remember working at the adult daycare at St. Joe's in eighth grade and being able to walk down the street over to the market area and feel like I was going, I wasn't going to have to deal with a lot of racism. And I remember going to Signorita Burita, I remember sitting at the chairs at the art park, I remember the Vietnamese restaurant that I could feel home in where out Arton Brewery is now, where they had billiards, and it was just, I always knew the city was gonna be my home one day. And now, knowing that I can celebrate Lunar New Year with this newfound family I have and that we had so many people come to support on such a rainy and freezing day, during Lunar New Year was an amazing time, and I'm so happy that many of you joined us for that celebration. It moves me so much. I want to also highlight that it was SAAL, S-A-A-L, the South Asian American League, that really championed those efforts for vaccination, and I really am so grateful for them, for them to pave the way so that Lancaster AAPI can do the work that we do and we work together. So I want to make a special thanks to the people that make Lancaster AAPI so wonderful: Adam Hosey, Bree Nguyen, Kat Sello, Cindy Guo, Sam Guo, Donna Pham, Julia Zhaou, Laura Wu, Libby Etheridge, Linda Hasunuma, Ole Honvithong, Paula Coda, Heidi Castillo, and you over there with the baby, you too. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other comments from the public on the resolution? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. Sincha Kuevee. May marks Asian Pacific, Asian, Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, which celebrates the histories of Americans hailing from across the Asian continent and from the Pacific Islands. This month is the time to speak out, share stories, and debunk myths about the Asian communities. But it's not the only time to celebrate Asian cultural diversity. The API community is the fastest-growing demographic here in Lancaster and around the country. Our history is filled with incredible stories of resilience, of persistence, of determination to fight for our basic rights. This month is the celebration of our history, of our culture, and all the different ways in which our community has really demonstrated that we're not only here to stay, but we are a part of this fabric, a part of this community and country. Being a transplant from Baltimore, Lancaster has welcomed me with open arms, but since the formation of the AAPI Coalition, it's been very heartwarming because I have extended family. And because of them, I'm, I have the courage to speak up to you, to hear today, to really say thank you. And the gentleman who's right behind me is Hong Nok Wu. He's the first Asian who immigrated here to Lancaster. So we want to represent all Asian communities and really continue the legacy of our community. So thank you for seeing us, and thank you for hearing us, and thank you for giving us a space here in our community.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye. I do also have presentation copies of this resolution. For anyone who'd like to receive them, I'll bring them down. Let me take extra time for hugs around here. Mr. Harris, our next resolution.
Yes, Madam President. Resolution Number 36. A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster celebrating National Public Works Week in commemoration of the tens of thousands of men and women in North America and in the City of Lancaster who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. We introduced this at our committee meeting at the beginning of the month, and we heard from Director Campbell from the Public Works Department that told us about the work of the over 210 employees of our Department of Public Works here in the city. And I think it's important to highlight the work that they do that often goes unseen, like making sure that water comes out of your tap and that our water is clean, that we're putting back into the Conestoga and Saskatoon Rivers, making sure that our streets are paved, making sure that the trash gets taken out in our trashcans downtown, often on the weekends, early in the morning is when I see them doing that. And they're an incredibly important part of our City of Lancaster family. I will take any other council comments on the resolution. And I wasn't sure, Director Campbell, if you had anything that you'd like to add this evening while we're here to celebrate Public Works Month.
Thank you. The only thing that I would want to add, since you were so eloquent in summarizing the presentation last week, was that I'm tremendously proud of the people who do their best and commit to the City of Lancaster, and we are doing our best to create one good career, not just one good job, for the people who work with the City of Lancaster for us, with us, come from us. And I'm very, again, I'm very, very proud and thank you for recognizing Public Works Week.
Thank you very much. I'll take any other comments from the public on the resolution. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye. Thank you very much. And Director Campbell, I'll have a copy of this for you that I think you can present to employees in your department. Thank you. All right. And our next item, Mr. Harris. It's a, I'm sorry, it's a mayoral proclamation, so I'm actually gonna turn to Mayor Sarachi for this one.
Thank you. This proclamation is in regards to Mental Health Awareness Month, so there's a lot of things that are happening in May, and they are all very important. We have a number of people that are here who have, who work in our community around mental health, and I want to just read a few of the excerpts from this. "Whereas mental health is essential to the overall health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions affect one in five adults and one in six youths in the United States and can have profound impact on individuals, families, and communities. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month has been observed in May since 1949 to raise awareness about mental health and reduce the stigma associated with mental illness. And whereas the City of Lancaster recognizes the importance of mental health and supports efforts to promote mental health, address trauma, and prevent mental illness. And whereas COVID has highlighted the importance of mental health and the need for access to mental health, care, and support." I want to just call out the efforts of Zarita Harris May, who has been our champion of being, becoming a trauma-informed community. Yeah, you can snap it up for her. We have been diligently working across our city bureaus. All of our police officers, firefighters, housing inspectors, and others within the city have gone through trauma-informed training. This has been a partnership through a grant that we received with LGH Pen Medicine that has helped to support these trauma-informed efforts in the city. It is now being institutionalized in our HR onboarding practices so that every person that comes to work for the city has exposure to these trauma-informed principles. We believe that they are that important in recognizing and working with community members who have experienced different forms of trauma themselves. And so this Mental Health Awareness proclamation, I think of these as a step on the journey. We have much, much more work to do. This is calling awareness to the efforts that are happening in our community and the work of the many partners that are bringing this work forward and continuing to advance the mental health of our community. And with that, I would like to invite, I have multiple copies of this, but I would like to invite anybody who is here, I know that there are folks here from Mental Health America and others, if you have anything that you would like to say, you can please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Otherwise, we'll get some photos and I'll hand these out for you.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi, for the opportunity to bring awareness of mental health to our Lancaster County and city. I ask all of you to be compassionate to those that may be experiencing mental health challenges. I ask all of you to ask folks how they're doing, not just once, but twice, and reach out to any of the providers, although there is a myth that there aren't enough providers in Lancaster County we're able to find them. We want to build a community that is mentally well and that people are easily connected and get the support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
training for the City of Lancaster. And I will make a note for anyone who was here for any of the resolutions but does not wish to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's okay, and I'll make a quick pause to allow you to exit. Yes. I'm getting a lot of thank yous from the back, so we'll take a moment. That's okay, we don't take it personally. Thank you. All right. We now move to our first public comment period reserved for residents who have contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting to request the opportunity to address city council. Again, durations of the comments is limited to no longer than three minutes per speaker, and please begin with your name and block of residence for the meeting record. Do we have any public comment this evening, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Madam President.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is reports requested by council, of which there is one. Mr. Harris.
Actually, there's two. The first tonight is the Global Shapers Lancaster Hub Bike Month Campaign.
Thank you very much. Yes, there's two. So we're welcoming the Global Shapers. And I believe, members of council, you have received a copy of this presentation as well via email, and we'll also have it on the screens. Welcome.
Good evening. This has already been such a rich time together. Thank you for this opportunity to share in today's meeting, and thanks in particular to Councilor Arroyo, alum of the Global Shapers Lancaster Hub, for requesting our report for the agenda. I want to introduce myself and some of the Global Shapers team here today. My name is Laura Pauls Thomas, and I serve as curator of the Global Shapers Lancaster Hub. I am co-presenting here with Joshua Patrago, decade-dedicated member of the hub since 2020. We also have Kelsey Goan, who is our hub's vice curator this year. Give a little wave. Ashley Glencer is incoming curator, and Andrew Pauls Thomas is incoming vice curator. Their terms begin July 1. Like most of our hub, we are all city residents here. Today, Josh and I will share about Global Shapers and our Ride, Roll, and Stroll Lancaster Project. I'll hand it over to Josh to explain what Global Shapers is.
Hello, everybody. Do we want to the next slide? So a little bit about us, the Global Shapers. We've been making some noise here in Lancaster, but who we are is we're a network of young people under the age of 30 living in Lancaster, and really, we just have a good time trying to address whatever issue we see in Lancaster County that we think we can make an impact in. There's almost no rules, and that's what makes it really fun, just getting close with members in the community. A lot of them work with great organizations within the community, and that really helps us create some of the projects that we do by networking with them. And yeah, our goal is just to get more folks in the community engaged about issues that could use some more engagement, like our project today. Next slide, please. So the Lancaster Hub was established in 2015. Currently, we have 25 members. There's three hubs in Pennsylvania, and most excitingly, there's 500 hubs around 152 countries. And we've had some global seminars with those folks, and it's been interesting to talk to people from, honestly, some countries I found out at that meeting. So it's been, it's been great to really connect with people all around the world and seeing what they're doing to get inspired to do things in our community. So that's been one of the greatest aspects of the Global Shapers for me. Our past projects last year included bringing attention to housing equity, single-use plastics, and helping with tech literacy for refugees and some youth innovation. Next slide, please. And currently, we have a great amount of partners. One of our partners that we teamed up for this was the Common Wheel, but a lot of our members, some work for the Literacy Council, CWS, for private organizations as well, Midnight Central Committee. So again, having all those connections with folks working at those organizations really helps our group do what we're able to do by connecting more organizations in Lancaster. Next slide, please. And I'll let Laura explain the project that we have for this year.
Thanks, Josh. Ride, Roll, and Stroll Lancaster is a month-long campaign we created to encourage the Lancaster community to bike, ride transit, roll, and walk to over 15 destinations in Lancaster County during National Bike Month, which is here in May. Participants get a passport, visit destinations to get stamps, and then turn in their passport at the end of the month to enter to win prizes. We We partnered with Church World Service and Communications Essentials to have this passport translated into eight languages so that our refugee and immigrant neighbors can also participate. This campaign basically aims to increase awareness and encourage use of active transportation options in Lancaster County. Next slide. So we really created this campaign to support the city of Lancaster's existing initiatives around safe streets and Vision Zero, our countywide Active Transportation Plan, Climate Action Plan, and our Equity and Accessibility Goals, as we strive to be a welcoming city for all. Climate action, safe streets, and equity are just some of the issues that are important to our hub and to the Global Shapers community as a whole. And we think that robust support of active transportation options is one way to address each of these concerns. We appreciate your support by participating or spreading the word about Ride, Roll, and Stroll Lancaster. I have passports and flyers if you want to share about it at your workplace or school. Also, if you know any inspiring young people who would be interested in joining our hub, please send them our way. Next slide. So thank you, council and Mayor Sarachi, for this opportunity to share about Global Shapers and the issues that matter to us.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from members of council on the presentation? Yeah, absolutely. Council Craig.
Could you talk to me a little bit about single-use plastics?
Yes. So our single-use plastics project was called Pass On Plastic, and Mr. Arroyo actually knows more about it than I do because it was a project initiated in, I believe, 2018 in partnership with an organization called Climate Reality, and it focused on getting individuals and businesses to move away from single-use plastics like straws, single-use water bottles, and towards more sustainable alternatives.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to riding, rolling, and strolling this month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report is a comprehensive plan update. And we have Director Delft. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, members of the public. I realized in, we're a lot louder tonight. I realized in refining the remarks for the report tonight that some of the scheduling elements of the presentation were sort of complex, in part because of requirements by the municipal planning code. So I did just provide a visual aid right before the meeting here. So it's not critical that you have that, but I do think it will help follow along with the presentation. I just have verbal remarks tonight. This report tonight is intended to provide an update on the comprehensive plan, where we are in the planning process, and the anticipated adoption schedule for this summer and fall. This month is Mayor's Neighborhood Month. Almost exactly two years ago, the city kicked off its public participation for the first city com plan in 30 years. Since that time, our Planning Bureau has led a groundbreaking engagement process by any national standard, and particularly for a city our size. We have had 14,000 interactions during the engagement process over the last two years. So I'm going to pause, and I'm going to say that again, 14,000 interactions. I paused because we're really happy and proud of this particular metric. This includes almost 5,000 direct interactions with people in person or on formal surveys. It also includes over 9,000 indirect interactions on the website and through social media. We also have engaged or partnered with over 100 organizations over the course of this engagement process. You may not have heard from us as much lately because we have been in production mode. This winter and spring, city staff have been working diligently to translate all our community input and data analysis into a set of written citywide policies and future land use and development maps. On May 24, the city will be sharing the draft policies and maps with the public. So part of my charge tonight is to encourage you to come to the May 24 event. This will be the last major community meeting for the com plan, and we encourage all council members, residents, and stakeholders to attend. The project team has poured an immense amount of time and resources into making this a fantastic event, and we're very excited about it. There will be an open house in the Ware Center Gallery from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. with learning stations and exhibits, maps, charts. There will also be an optional presentation in the auditorium from 5:30 till about 6:15 p.m. There will be opportunities for participants to leave comments and feedback during the event, and we will post all the meeting materials on the project website and accept public comments there at the website for the remainder of May. We will also hold a reception earlier in the day on May 24 at the Ware Center to thank and celebrate our amazing resident steering committee, who has been helping us guide this journey since early 2021, even before the public engagement first started. Okay, moving along. What happens next in this process? The schedule that you had before you essentially covers a period of about six months, from this month, May, through October. After processing the community comments that we receive at the May 24 event, the com plan project team will strive to complete the draft final comprehensive plan document by the end of June. Once the draft final document is complete, city staff will hold a series of city planning commission meetings during July and August to discuss the plan in depth and make any last significant changes to the plan. These meetings will be open to the public, as always, planning commission meetings are always open to the public, and we encourage council members to attend, as well as community members who are interested in the finer details of the plan and wish to make further public comments. In case council members are not available to attend the city planning commission meetings this summer, I will also be reaching out to schedule an individual meeting with each of you, so we may go over policy highlights and any questions that you may have. Once the planning commission phase is complete, city staff will finalize the comprehensive plan document and send it to external agencies for official comment, as required by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code. The required entities include the County Planning Commission, the School District of Lancaster, and adjoining municipalities. The external agency comment period must be a minimum of 45 days. Following that 45 days, which we expect to occur in the September and October timeframe, there will be a public hearing at city council to present the final plan and hear public comments. The process concludes with a resolution and a vote by city council to adopt the plan. The date of final adoption will be determined by you, city council, and the legislative calendar, though we hope to cross the finish line in late October or early November. In conclusion, I'm absolutely thrilled that we are about to reach a vital milestone on May 24, when we share the policies and maps with the public. I want to thank each and every resident, organization, and stakeholder who has contributed to this planning process. It really does take a village to create a plan of this kind. We're getting very close to finalizing a community-driven vision that will guide our city's growth and change over the next 20 years. That's all I have for you tonight. I don't want to steal too much thunder from the May 24 event. We're going to be focused on the policy substance on May 24. I mostly wanted to speak to you about the project, where we are in the project process, and what the adoption procedures look like, because it tends to be, as I said, a little bit complex due to the state laws. If you have any questions, please, I'm available now, or you can also catch me at a later time via email or phone.
Thank you very much, Director Delft. I appreciate the roadmap of where we're going and how long it will take to get there. I also appreciate the 14,000 interactions. Really, truly incredible. Thank you to you and your team for getting us to this point. Can you just repeat one more time the specifics of the May 24 event? Because that is where the plan will be presented to the public, and so that's important. So the where, the when, all of those things, just one more time.
Yes, that's correct. And I just want to be clear that the plan document itself will not be ready on May 24, but all of the key written policy content and maps will be presented to the public on May 24. And I'll give you those details again. It will be an open house format at the Ware Center Gallery from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. on May 24, and that gallery will be set up with learning stations and exhibits. And then there will also be a formal presentation within the auditorium at 5:30. Douglas, I am right about 5:30? Yes. Yes, 5:30.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Members of council, anything else for Director Delft?
Council President.
Councilor Ahmed.
Thank you, Director. That was very informative. If some community members aren't able to attend the May 24 meeting, is there a way that they could provide input or get access to some of the presentations?
Yes. Thank you for the question. We will be putting all of the materials on the project website the next day, and we will be providing a tool or two that allows public comment on those meeting materials for the remainder of May. In addition to that, we will have probably three or four planning commission meetings in July and August that are focused on the details of the plan. This is an unusual situation because the com plan is so dense and extensive. Just to give you a sense, our citywide policies, just the policies themselves, none of the narrative that sets up those policies are 27 pages in their own right. So in order to be able to get through all of that material in depth, we have to utilize the planning commission to do that. They also have a formal role in the process as they then make a recommendation to city council before the plan is adopted as well.
Thank you, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mayor Sarachi.
I just want to underscore the 5,000 residents that were specifically contacted. I, that, we've learned a lot about engagement through this two-year process, and I think that we, I've asked the team to really document how we've done this because this is, I believe, a national model for how to do a comprehensive plan. And I remember interviewing Chris when he was first considering coming to the city and saying, you know, that we're really going to do this. We have not done this in over 30 years. We need to have a com plan. He had specific expertise, and I think that he and Douglas have done an outstanding job. We've had multilingual engagement efforts that included folks who speak Swahili, Arabic, Haitian Creole, Spanish. We've done online digital engagement. We were at community events throughout the city, and I think for the first time in the city's history, this is actually a plan that is evolving from the voices of the residents, all residents in the city of Lancaster. And if you go back and you look at the 1993 plan, you see very clearly that it was more of a top-down than bottom-up, or the bottom didn't always include all the voices. So I'm really, really proud of the efforts that have been put into this and being novice to this entire process, because I've never gone through a com plan process like this before. Your team has done an outstanding job, and I think that council, you will be particularly pleased when you read the policy recommendations, which do align to the strategic priorities, which, as we know, have come also from, you know, from the community in terms of what the priorities are related to housing and transportation and land use, and on and on it goes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Delft. Oh, sorry, Council Kleest.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director Delft, for your presentation. I'm just a little bit curious. And what kind of feedback do you have from your interactions with the community overall about the plan?
We will be presenting quite a bit of the data from the engagement at the May 24 event, so I didn't bring all of that information tonight. But I can say that one of the things that I'm most proud of, and you'll see this in the maps and the various other products that we've produced for the event and for the plan, is that we've had an equitable engagement that has been a core value of the process from the very beginning. And that has reflected, excuse me, that has reflected back to us a number of policies related to a focus on local entrepreneurship, for example, reflecting the makeup of our community. It has, it has shown up with respect to housing affordability and housing security. It really applies to all of our planning systems across the board. We've divided the policies into five planning systems. The first system is related to strong neighborhoods and housing. The second system is related to expanding economic opportunity. The third system is focused on connecting people and places. The fourth system is focused on sustainability, growing greener. And the fifth system is focused on building community capacity. And across all of those systems, you will see that equity is factored in to make sure that all of those in our community are benefiting from the growth. A comprehensive plan at its heart is really about the physical growth and change of a city, but we want to make sure that that physical growth and change is creating opportunities for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Delft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Kleest. Thank you again, Director Delft. We'll be there on the 24th. Our next item is reports of committees of council. These are the meetings that were held on May 1, 2023. We'll begin with public safety. Council Diaz.
This, the committee meeting met, and the Administration Resolution 37, 2023, was brought up, and this will be related to immigration resolution. So we will bring this forward at the legislative agenda.
Thank you, Council Diaz. Public Works, Council Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did meet, and I want to thank Councilman Kleest for covering and leading the discussion in my absence. Thank you. There were three items on the agenda. The first one was Resolution 36, which was recognizing Public Works Week, and we do want to extend another appreciation for all of your hard work and services in the Public Works Department. I know a lot goes unnoticed, but Public Works works, so thank you for that, Director Campbell. The second two items were Resolution 32, which outlines an agreement for stormwater management with the School District of Lancaster, which will come up later, as well as Resolution 34, which is a grant for the Beaver Street Pocket Park, which will come up later in the agenda. And that concludes the Public Works Committee agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Economic Development, Councilor Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President. The Economic Committee did, Economic Development Committee did meet. I gave a brief update on the ARPA process, just letting council know that we were going to be doing a check-chore presentation to all the awardees of ARPA dollars, and I'd like to say that we did do that on Friday. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you much. Thank you so much, Councilor Arroyo. Finance Committee, Councilor Ahmed.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Community Planning, Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Community Planning did meet. We had two items on the agenda. Administration Resolution 33 amending the sewer, the sewer and control plan to include Lombardo's property project, and Administration Bill Number 7 amending the zoning ordinance. Both of those items will come up in a little while on the legislative agenda.
Thank you, Council Craig. And Personnel Committee, Council Kleest.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, May 1, and reviewed nominations for reappointment to the Traffic Commission and a nomination for appointment to the City Revitalization and Improvement Zone Authority. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We now move into our legislative agenda, and I will turn it right back over to Council Kleest for your nominations for appointment.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make a motion to approve the nomination of Mr. Constantine Andrews and Mr. Dean Lee Evans, just for, I just want to remind that those two nominees attended the meeting, the committee meeting on May 1, and they told us about their willingness to serve, their motivation, and their perspectives for the new term. And we also have another nominee, whose name is Olivia Atlastic, and she attended the meeting also, and she told the meeting also, and, uh, she told us about her experience and her interest to serve on the Board of, uh, City Revitalization and Improvement Zone Authority. So now I make a motion to approve the nomination to reappoint Constantine Mendros and Dean
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Lee Evans to the Traffic Commission for a two-year term from December 31st, 2022 to
Aye.
Thank you for that, Council Kleest. Um, we go to item B on our legislative agenda, ordinances for first reading.
December 31st, 2024.
Mr. Harris.
An ordinance of the Lancaster City Council amending the City of Lancaster zoning ordinance,
Second.
We have a motion and a second for these reappointments. Are there any council comments on the reappointments?
ordinance number 6, 2013, chapter 300 of the city code, as amended by ordinance 7, 2022,
From the public.
to revise the definition of short-term rental by changing the reference to single-family
Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mend.
Aye.
Mr. Royo. dwelling unit to dwelling unit, to add a footnote to schedule, to the schedule of district
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
regulations, table of permitted uses, commercial services, 300, requiring a unit to qualify Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
And President Beckett.
Aye.
And, uh, now I make a motion to nominate, now I make a motion of, to, for the appointment,
as a single-family home or apartment, and to make editing improvements to section 363 regarding off-street parking and looting requirements, providing for the repeal of inconsistent
uh, of Ms. Olivia Atlastic to the City Revitalization and Improvement Zone Authority to complete
ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance
an unfinished term from May 9th, 2023 to December 31st, 2025.
shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Again, this is a first read, um, so we received a presentation about this, um, Douglas, uh,
Second.
A motion and a second on that appointment. Any council comments on the appointment? on our last meeting, um, and actually I'll turn that over to Council Craig to provide And for the public. some remarks about that. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mend.
Thank you, thank you, Council President.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Um, the city's comprehensive plan, Growing Together, contains goals, objectives, and
Aye.
Mr. Kleest.
strategies that support zoning updates to improve affordable housing options, including higher densities that protect and strengthen neighborhoods, that promote livability and improve opportunities for employment and economic development by attracting more businesses to the city. And the Lancaster city's 2018, 2022 strategic plan promotes the strength, promotes the strengthening of neighborhoods, increasing the supplies of affordable housing, and attracting investments in the city. The proposal, the proposed zoning amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan, and building on strengthening, uh, strength, strategic plan. And this was a first reading. Douglas, I don't know if there's anything that you might want to add to that and possibly answer questions if there are any.
Thank you, Council Craig. Good evening, Douglas.
Good evening, councilors, and good evening, mayor. Um, yes, Councilor Craig, um, thank you for, uh, for reading that into the record. Um, that is the review of the County Planning Commission, who also reviewed our proposed ordinance and found it to be consistent, um, with, uh, our, uh, Growing Together Metro Region Plan, as well as the county plan. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, I do just, for the sake of everyone's knowledge in the room, I'll just provide a brief recap and sort of finer point on, um, where we're at right now, um, with this ordinance adoption. So, uh, last year you all amended, uh, the zoning ordinance to remove short-term rentals from, uh, most of the neighborhoods in the city. Uh, we, at that time, we promised to come back and, um, tweak the ordinance a little further, um, to refine it, and after, uh, many discussions with the Planning Commission and with stakeholders in the community, uh, some of them short-term rental operators who attended our planning commission meetings over the last several months, um, we arrived at, uh, a proposal to allow short-term rentals in small mixed-use buildings where there's one or two apartments above a commercial use. Um, that would still, uh, be within the districts where we currently permit short-term rentals, so it's not looking to expand, uh, the, the areas at all. Um, but for instance, um, you might think of, um, downtown or, uh, mixed-use district buildings where there is a commercial ground floor and there's a vacant upper floor, um, that can be hard to develop. Uh, we actually see this policy as not only putting the, the use in the right place and, um, allowing for the types of units that are truly commercial to host a commercial use, um, but we're also seeing this potentially as a way of furthering economic development, um, in buildings where there is vacant, uh, vacant floors. Um, keep in mind that up to this point, only short, uh, sorry, only single-family homes have been allowed for short-term rentals. So what we're proposing here is to change the definition of short-term rental to, say, dwelling unit, and then specify that it either has to be a single-family home or an apartment, which we define in the city, a little oddly, as one or two apartment units above a commercial use. So if you get to three, you're now a mixed-use building, that doesn't count, you can't do short-term rentals, our apartment buildings are not going to flip into giant hotels, uh, just want to clarify, clarify that. So we're really looking at small-scale, uh, mixed-use buildings, and, uh, yeah, we believe that, uh, the planning commission and I think staff really believe that this is a good thing, so happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Douglas, I just want to say, uh, I really appreciate you coming back to us with this. I think that this is really an example of how local government can work to get it right and, and, and not think that, you know, a solution that is, you know, we're done. Um, the ongoing efforts that, that you've done and listening to the community when there was an issue, um, is, is appreciated, that's really what it's all about. So I appreciate your work in doing that and appreciate you coming back to us with that. Um, and I particularly appreciated hearing, um, from someone who was affected, uh, during our last meeting about the realities of what this could mean for them and, um, how a simple change in definition could accomplish that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, uh, President Beckett, and, uh, I, I do believe there are some of those operators in the room, and we, we did, um, listen carefully to many of the people who showed up and tried to, um, come to a sound, a sound policy, I'm keenly if we've done that.
I'll take any other comments from council.
Council President, if I may.
Council Ahmed, yes.
Thank you, Douglas. Um, I was, I was not present at last week, but I did read over the, um, PowerPoint, and I have two questions. My first one is, um, do you perceive that this will affect the local hotel industry? Um, it's still struggling to get pre-COVID room night quotas, and will this also hinder the collection of hotel tax that, uh, supports the convention center and Discover Lancaster?
I think those are good questions. Um, you know, when we, part of the process of, uh, making these adjustments was actually meeting with, um, the director of the Lancaster County Convention Center Authority and, uh, Kevin Malloy, uh, and, uh, I won't speak for him, but my, my impressions were that, um, the short-term rentals are actually a complement to the tourism industry. Um, I, I will leave that to the professionals to debate, uh, but I did not, um, at no point did we receive any concerns from the hotel industry, uh, about this particular change. Um, I, I will say that, you know, I think they can serve very different, uh, groups. Um, the, regarding the tax, uh, the city does not, um, city does not collect that tax, you know, this is a county, uh, hotel tax that's distributed. Um, I'm certainly not the, the expert on it, but my understanding is that part of that tax is actually, uh, that's collected from short-term rentals, actually ends up getting redistributed to, um, the hotels within the county, or at least the convention center I know benefits from some of that revenue. So, uh, part of, uh, one of the realizations that I had is actually, um, for the short-term rentals who are, uh, collecting and paying the tax to the county, uh, properly, part of that money is then going back and benefiting the convention center authority, um, and that, that's actually turned into substantial revenue. Um, so, uh, I know that there are some platforms that are better about relaying or remitting that tax, and others, uh, I believe Airbnb is now, um, you know, has, is striving to be compliant with that in many communities, I can't speak for a lot of the other platforms, there are so many out there.
Thank you, and, um, just my follow-up question is, uh, do we see this rising rental prices within the downtown area? I understand that it wouldn't be in, um, places that were zoned for, uh, for residential neighborhoods, but within the downtown, would this, um, do we foresee that this could increase, you know, rental prices?
Um, personally, I, I don't see that as, as a, a possibility, um, happy to have more conversation around that. Um, the rental, the long-term rental prices are very much, uh, I perceive them to be very different market than the short-term rentals that people seek just to come into the, into the city for several nights. Um, the rental prices are certainly affected by supply and demand, and we, you know, don't have enough units, as, as you've heard many of us say, um, over the last couple of years as we've done housing studies. Um, the short-term rentals in the downtown, uh, not in the downtown, but in the districts where we allow them, uh, I want to point out that the type of building that we're permitting here is not your predominant building, that's throughout the city. We have a lot of mixed-use structures, but to narrow to the districts that we permit short-term rentals in, and then to narrow to the building type of either single-family home or a building with one or two apartments above, you're, you're not looking at very many units. Um, I, I wish I had the numbers in front of me, but at one point I looked at the number of single-family homes just within the districts where we currently permit, uh, short-term rentals, and it was like several hundred or something like that, it was not a big number. So, um, when you then add in the smaller pool of structures that meet the criteria outlined in this, um, this ordinance, I, I do not think that the number of units that's being added is actually significant to the overall stock, uh, but I do think that what is significant about it is, um, the potential, um, to, uh, revitalize some of the upper floors and key commercial areas in the city.
Thank you, and that completes my question. Council President.
Thank you, Councilor Ahmed. I'll also just make note that one of the comments that we got to hear at the last meeting, uh, now this was commercial rent, but, um, not being able to do this would cause the commercial rent to be higher in that circumstance, so that is one cause and effect, it's one story of many, but it is tangential to your question. Uh, Council Walsh, you had a question or comment?
Thank you, Council President. Um, Douglas, quick question, has a variance ever been granted to the short-term rental ordinance?
So, since, uh, council adopted the zoning ordinance last year, um, if my memory serves me well, I believe there were two variances for short-term rentals. Um, one of them was contested by the city, and, uh, I believe that, um, that, that appeal is no longer going on, the city prevailed, uh, either through withdrawal or determination. Um, the second one, uh, was not, um, appealed by the city, and that is because of certain hardships around the development on that particular site. Uh, those are the only two that the zoning hearing board, um, has provided, and, uh, only one of them actually moved forward, um, and those were new units, new micro-units that were being, uh, built, so it wasn't competing with existing housing stock in that case. Um, the other appeals that have been made, um, I have shown up personally and, and I've spoken to the zoning hearing board, uh, regarding all of them and have recommended denial, and, uh, I've done that, um, and it has not been an easy task doing that, but I've done that because I am trying to uphold the spirit of what you all, um, voted to do last year, um, in amending the ordinance, and I have let the zoning hearing board know repeatedly that we would be back before you to amend the ordinance again and continue, uh, to tweak our policy, um, and, uh, they, they have, um, supported that effort.
And then with the changing of the language, do you foresee any increase in asking for variances or coming before the board to ask for, um, a, not a change in the ordinance, but a workaround? Will any of the language change how, I guess, trying to like figure out my question with the right words here? Um, do you, I think my question is, with the language change, do you foresee any additional, um, pushback, or do you find that it'll be giving greater clarity, or just how do you think this language will be perceived, or?
Yeah, I, I-
If you can follow that at all, Douglas.
If I, if I follow you, I think you're asking about, um, kind of how this sets up the zoning hearing board and potentially burdens them with additional zoning variances, and is this aligning with, um, eh, the, the way we're doing business and, and meeting residents' needs? And I think overall, um, what we've seen is a decrease in the zoning hearing board requests over time. Uh, when the ordinance was, was originally passed, um, we saw surge of variances, uh, people wanted to, um, uh, challenge it, or they, they thought that they had a particular exception and, and a case that they could make, um, and those did not succeed. Uh, however, what we've also seen, um, is that there have been a couple of unique variances, um, that have been requested that were denied, um, where we felt like it required further consideration, and that's partly what prompted this particular ordinance. Um, there were two zoning variances, both of them denied, um, that made a request to utilize a one or two apartments above a commercial use, uh, one in, uh, one of the CB districts downtown, and the other in a mixed-use district, um, both where we permit short-term rentals, uh, to be by right, but not in that particular kind of unit. Uh, we, I think, uh, staff is nervous about opening up multifamily to short-term rental because we have a lot of housing stock, uh, in that area, and we don't want that to be depleted, um, and create affordability issues. Um, however, in these two instances, they were both renovating upper floors that were otherwise unutilized, um, and we know, and, and Lancaster City Alliance, if they were here, would vouch to the fact that there are upper floors that do need to be renovated and put into productive use and assist the city with tax dollars in the process. Um, so that's one piece of it. Uh, the, the smaller piece actually that benefits the zoning hearing board more, which we haven't talked about, is this, um, minor relief for parking, and it, I shouldn't even call it relief because it was technically an error that we made when we wrote the ordinance. Um, we do not require, uh, we intended to not require one parking space for one homestay. And remember, homestay is when you have a resident living in their home and renting out one or two bedrooms, short-term rent, uh, for short-term, not a whole house rented out, that would be a short-term rental. So for homestay, we didn't intend to have parking for one bedroom, we intended to have park, one parking space if two bedrooms were rented. But when you do the math, if you have, uh, one parking space for two bedrooms, that means a half parking space for one bedroom, and then you round up and you end up with one parking space. So that's how our zoning ordinance functions, so we're, that's probably more, uh, specific than you need to know, but what we're trying to do is fix that and match our original intent to what I presented you last year, because we have gotten, I think, six zoning variance requests because someone wanted to rent one homestay bedroom and they had no parking on their property. So, uh, we do see that as being, uh, as providing additional relief to the zoning hearing board and reducing variance requests, that's our hope.
Great. Thank you for explaining that, I really appreciate the context of putting policy to practice and what that looks like.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Council Kleest.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, knowing that, uh, the short-term rental has been an issue for quite some time, um, what is the timeline for implementing this amendment? And, uh, are there any barriers for its implementation?
Uh, any boundaries, you said?
Well, barriers.
Oh, um, barriers to its implementation? So, uh, as soon as this would be adopted, our hope is that, um, we would begin to implement. Um, you know, it's, there's a, I think, a 20-day, correct me if I'm wrong, 20-day, uh, waiting period before an ordinance officially comes into effect. Uh, in Pennsylvania, there's been the standing ordinance doctrine that some communities have picked up, uh, which means that they begin implementing upon legal advertising. Um, you know, I would have to consult with our solicitor about the best approach there, but I think our intent is to, uh, implement this ordinance as soon, uh, as we can. Um, I don't think there's any reason to, to wait, um, beyond the, that minimum time period. Um, in terms of barriers, um, I can't think of any at the moment, I mean, not beyond just- So we do see that as being, as providing additional relief to the zoning hearing board and reducing variance requests. That's our hope.
Thank you for explaining that. I really appreciate the context of putting policy to practice and what that looks like.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Council Kleinst.
Thank you, Madam President. Knowing that the short-term rental has been an issue for quite some time, what is the timeline for implementing this amendment? And are there any barriers for its implementation?
Any boundaries, you said?
Barriers.
Oh, barriers to its implementation. So as soon as this would be adopted, our hope is that we would begin to implement. You know, there's, I think, a 20-day, correct me if I'm wrong, 20-day waiting period before an ordinance officially comes into effect. In Pennsylvania, there's been the standing ordinance doctrine that some communities have picked up, which means that they begin implementing upon legal advertising. You know, I would have to consult with our solicitor about the best approach there, but I think our intent is to implement this ordinance as soon as we can. I don't think there's any reason to wait beyond that minimum time period. In terms of barriers, I can't think of any at the moment. I mean, not beyond just the traditional challenges of tracking variances and, you know, variance zoning approvals. I think that this actually is very manageable for city staff.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council Kleinst.
President.
Council Diaz.
Have we received any type of arguments, like taking us to court for any reasons regarding the changes or for these Airbnb?
Have we been taken to court? Well, I think there are sort of two, two pieces to this. There is the zoning appeals, which happen. So you all adopted an ordinance, residents go to the zoning hearing board. If they're denied, they have the opportunity to appeal to a lower court. That has happened. And as I mentioned, we've prevailed on that front to date. Then there are other court issues which may arise through enforcement, and that too has occurred. And, you know, we continue to explore best approaches in that regard. Those are the only two legal situations that I'm aware of, those two types.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Diaz. Anything further from council? And from the public? Again, this is a first read, so if you have comments, you can come on up to the podium, and we won't be voting on this this evening.
President Beckett, if I may just add one more detail.
Yes.
Just to address the housing piece, I did find the analysis I was referring to here.
Thank you.
And in the CB and the CB1, they're combined, those two are downtown districts, there are only 60 single-family homes. So right now, we only allow these units in single-family homes. When you look at other districts, the numbers do increase a little bit. I would say collectively, between all the districts where we currently allow these, we have 480 single-family homes in the correct districts where these would be allowed. Not a lot, given how many single-family homes we have in the entirety of the city. If you look at single-family dwellings in our R4 district, for instance, we have nearly 1,000. That doesn't even consider R3, which covers most of the city. So you can see there, there aren't actually that many units where they're currently permitted in these districts, and so the apartments add a unique addition to that.
Thank you for those numbers.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
All right. We'll take public comment on the ordinance. Again, please begin with your name and block of residence. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Good evening. Thank you.
My name's Scott Seuss, 300th Block of North Queen Street. I'm just curious, as I like to see, I know as part of maintaining historic building stock in the city, it seems counterproductive to have empty spaces up above a lot of these buildings. I was wondering if you had any idea how many commercial buildings downtown actually have undeveloped upper floors, and how likely you think a change such as this might spur some renovations and improvements to maintain the vitality of those buildings?
Mr. Seuss, I can take a crack at that. We don't have detailed, building-by-building documentation of how many upper floors are vacant, but when you walk through downtown in the evening, you can readily see where there are lights on and where there aren't. And even in the 000th Block of Queen Street, many of those upper floors have been vacant. There have been, and you know this probably better than anybody in the room, many different attempts at renovating upper-story development. And because Pennsylvania operates under one monolithic construction code, the cost for the type of renovations that are necessary to provide for egress and sprinkler systems and so on have really been cost prohibitive for the type of upper-story development. Even some of the developers that, you know, if you remember Plasmerie, there was a developer, it was on the front page of the paper, it was, we were going to figure out how to do upper-story development. And unfortunately, that never came to pass because of the regulations, again, are uniform across Pennsylvania and don't really provide for the kind of historic adaptations that are necessary to do those upper-story development. We're hopeful, and we have, you know, one person here tonight who has done that and can speak to the costs for the fire suppression systems and so on. The upshot is that for short-term rentals, as we all know, these are highly lucrative because these are short-term stays. People coming in and out throughout a month can generate a lot more money than a single-family rental. And so that might incentivize additional upper-story development in the downtown. It is certainly, we hope for that. It is, short-term rentals are part of the economic fabric when they're in the right places and being managed correctly. And so, yes, we're going to be watchful about how this happens and continuing to talk to folks about what the possibilities are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seuss. Good evening.
Good evening. Joel Sims, 312 East Walnut Street. I missed the last meeting. Evan and I usually tag team. I own a building right down from Lancaster Brewing Company. I've been an architect for 40 years. I have my architectural firm there. We also have Lancaster co-working there. So I'm going to address this from two different perspectives. I've done a lot of work in the city, things like decades, that you might notice, we never even get our sign up, we just, they're stealth, we just design projects and move on. But I remember years ago, walking into a building and doing renovations on the first floor, and I remember talking to the owner and asking about what was on the second and third floor. And I went up there, I mean, I love old buildings, I mean, I love buildings. I mean, ever since I was a kid, if they were building homes in a neighborhood, I was in there, you know, walking through the houses. I still do. So I walked up and there was nothing there. What you may not realize is a lot of these places on the second and third floor, there's not plumbing, there's not heating, there's not air conditioning, it's not like an apartment that needs to be renovated. I mean, there's nothing. And I was flabbergasted because I said, what are you going to do? And, oh, I'm not going to do anything, I don't have the money. And the numbers just don't work to put apartments up there. She didn't say that, but I knew that, and so it didn't happen. And there's other buildings like that throughout the city where it's just not affordable. Are there apartments, but they're deplorable and they haven't been renovated in 40 years because it doesn't make any sense? So I think this is a great thing to do. I think it's going to help the buildings in the city that have this situation. I have Airbnbs. And so in my building in Lancaster on Walnut Street, there was an attic, seven-foot-high ceiling. What do you do with that? You know, there's nothing really you can do. I couldn't spend the money, so I ended up raising the ceiling up to 10 feet, doing two nice apartments in there, all with the intention of making it an Airbnb. I ran the numbers and it worked, if I could charge people money. And COVID hit, it took me two years to get it all renovated, so now I'm in the same situation with Evan. I have a cafe below, I have two apartments above, and I'm stuck. So take this situation, semi-hypothetical but actually real, somebody, Juan, contacts me and says, hey, I'd like to rent from you. My mom's dying, she's at Lancaster General, you're in a great location, I can get over and see her every day. I don't want to be in a hotel, I want to be in a comfortable place.
30 seconds, Mr. Sims.
I need to be there two to three weeks, and I say, ah, the ordinance requires that you have to be here a month. So by passing this, you're going to help people not only improve housing stock, but also provide where people need to come into a place for just a short time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Ms. Burton, good evening.
Starting 200th Block of Ann Street. First of all, I'm not saying I'm for or against what's going on, what I am concerned about is the council, I take our zoning ordinance very seriously. It's not something that we come and change, it was just changed and amended. We're getting ready to go over a comprehensive plan that's going to change policies in some ordinance. I think when the short-term rental came up, I think there were a lot of people here in council that was saying the decision was being made too quick. So now we are here and trying to amend it. I think council really needs to see, I think there were some questions that were asked that need to have some answers to. I mean, I think council continually promotes, we need housing for people, so to create short-term, is there a way or an innovative way? We know about the code that we cannot produce houses, that's much needed in our city. I mean, you know, we're talking about investors again, making money again, that's costing taxpayers again because they're going to use the city facilities, whether it's the police or the ambulance or, you know, I'm very, very concerned at the last council meeting, well, it's not the last meeting, but the council before that, I addressed council about parking. Now here we are, ready to address parking for short-term rentals, when our neighborhood's been crying and crying for some kind of parking solution. And already, we're making exceptions for investors. What about our residents? I want to say to council, when are we going to address the parking in our neighborhoods? And when before we make this zoning change? Take the time to think to see if it works. There's no reason in a year we're changing zoning ordinance. Now, I've been coming to council for many of years, and zoning ordinance isn't something that we change because people come up and it doesn't work for them, now we got to change it. There's a lot more work that goes into before we just say, okay, we're going to change this zoning ordinance because, like the case he presented, I'm not saying it's not a good case, but for that reason, what is going to be best for the residents of the city? And I'm asking council to consider that and to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Walt Rowan, I live at 24 North Shippen Street. I've actually spoken to the council before about short-term rental. I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. One, we have been, I represent a group of residents in the residential areas of the city that, in a couple of cases, had a number of investors come into our neighborhoods and buy properties and with the intent of turning them into short-term rentals. Most of, if not all of them, were turned down for zoning requests because they missed the window with the new ordinance. And what we now see is that there is a serious problem with enforcement of short-term rentals that are out of compliance. There's a lot of properties that were renovated without proper permits, there's quite a few Airbnbs that are actually being rented, whether they're in the residential zone and not currently appropriate for short-term rentals, or in other zones, but renting short-term rentals is two units or three units. So there's a lot of enforcement issues that are going on, what do we want to say? The city is not able so far to press a case and win a case in the current short-term rentals. The other thing is that we have been, as a group, very, I think, supportive of the changes that have been talked about, and the change that Douglas has brought to the council is, we think, a good one, because the idea of being in a commercial zone, having a mixed-use building makes a lot of sense for short-term rentals. The current ordinance, as it stands, states very specifically, the only short-term rental can come from an original individual home unit. So this, I think, is a change that makes sense. The one question that I have is that if a building is mixed-use, has a commercial ground floor, I believe we heard Douglas say that a one or two apartment could become short-term rental.
30 seconds, Mr. Rowan.
Pardon me?
Oh, 30 seconds. Continue, please.
Okay. That, from my standpoint, I think that makes sense, however, that would be the first time that a single building, as a short-term rental, can have two units in it. So that, by itself, creates an issue that I think needs to be clarified. Other than that, I think the ordinance is a good one. So again, my primary emphasis tonight is the idea of enforcement of folks, investors who are renting and utilizing short-term rental without proper authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Douglas, if you'd like to respond to that question?
Thank you for the question, and I'll just clarify that two family dwellings are not permitted for short-term rentals. The way that we've written that, we reference apartment, and apartment is defined in our zoning ordinance as to specifically mean one or two dwelling units above a commercial use. So it does not mean buildings with two units, it has to be on the second floor or above a commercial use. I guess it could be on the third floor as well, but only two dwelling units above a commercial use. So that wouldn't actually allow any other building type other than single-family home to be permitted.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Are there any further public comments this evening? Good evening.
Hi, Evan Young of West King Street. So I have two historic buildings, and I have, I spoke to you last week, and I have renovated one of the floors of one of my buildings, but I still have two more floors on that building that still need a lot of work, and I have. And then the other building, the tavern building, the second floor needs a lot of work. I really care about these historic buildings, I care about the nature of the historic nature and the character that it provides Lancaster, how unique and special it is to see what we've got here. I really want to take care of these buildings, it's really expensive, I just want to pay for it. I really want to pay for it. And I have done everything I can to keep my costs low. I got myself lead certified so that I could do my old lead remediation work. I swing my own hammer, I do everything I possibly can to keep my costs low. The materials still cost money, and we live in a free-market economy, I have to pay for stuff with money. And that's, yeah, my books, my books tell a story. And I just need, I just need to be able to generate some cash. All right, that's basically it. I think, I think that makes sense. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any further comments this evening? All right. This will be back up on our agenda at our May 23 meeting. Thank you to everyone. All right. Our next item, letter C, resolutions. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Madam President. A resolution of the city council approving a memorandum of understanding between the school district of Lancaster and the city of Lancaster to outline the responsibilities of the school district and city with respect to stormwater management facilities, improvements at Wickersham Elementary School, including cost-sharing, authorizing the appropriate officials of the city to negotiate and execute appropriate and necessary easement and right-of-way agreements to provide city access to the improvements, and memorializing the party's intent to enter into a post-construction operation and maintenance agreement regarding the improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'm here, I'll hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on resolution number 32. This is through Public Works. Council Walsh.
Council President, thank you. Director Campbell, I will need your assistance with this one. I think I understand what is intended through this resolution, but I do want to be very clear, so I'm going to give it my best shot, and then if you could fill in the blanks in between. So as I understand it, the resolution will allow the city to move forward in building a stormwater management facility at Wickersham Elementary School, and after that is complete, the city will also be providing a new turf above where the facility is or around?
So it's a good initial attempt.
I do appreciate that. You weren't here.
We're, we're based on-
This is reading comprehension at this point, so.
This is one of those, I like to think of as wonderful opportunities, where we're working with the school district of Lancaster. They need a new, a new playing field, and they need it to be artificial turf. It's in an area, one of the few areas of the city, where there's an opportunity to build some stormwater infrastructure. And so we've partnered with the, with the school district to be able to build the infrastructure under their proposed- under their proposed field, in conjunction with that work, so that they would have the field available later on, before the end of this current season. The stormwater infrastructure in place, or that we're looking for, or that we're asking for, will be a stormwater retention tank and some infiltration, which will be part of a larger system of stormwater management that we're looking at going into the future. This is an area, again, just north of Liberty Street, where the, where we'd be collecting water over a nine-acre area into that particular stormwater retention facility, and it would be under the field, so that there's no obstruction to the field. In fact, it will help improve the landscaping, the public open space up there, as well as make the, the playing fields competitive for the other teams that are competed against that do actually have access to, to artificial turf. McCaskey, that area does not have artificial turf, and so this is an opportunity for them to upgrade. Our, our part is the cost of the stormwater infrastructure, which is about 20% of the overall cost of the, of the work. We will be paying for that, and the, and the School District pays, is paying for the cost of the design, the engineering design of that work, so that it is integral with the larger system that we have proposed. That's it in a nutshell. I can probably get into a little bit more detail, but I'm not the engineer in particular. But in principle, it is that we're seeking the, for a memorandum of understanding so that this installation can take place. At the city's, the installation part will be at the city's cost. And I do want to say that the cost involved is, in the neighborhood, about $440,000, which is still a fraction of what it would otherwise have cost to manage that amount of stormwater over those nine acres if we were to do conventional green infrastructure for that particular part of the city.
Great. And then in regards to timeline of this getting kicked off, you said at the end of their season, so that puts us, I believe, in the-
No, the intention is for it to be kicked off almost immediately, so that-
With August being the end date?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's very aggressive. All right.
Thank you. Director Campbell, I think that Cindy McCormick was here to get into some of the particulars, but I think, I want to make sure that, just to address why it is such a tight turnaround, this opportunity came to us because the School District wanted to make the improvements to their playing fields, and because we have future stormwater plans for that area, this is a time for us to do that without having to re-disturb those fields after they have already paid to replace them.
That is correct. One of the things that has been a very fortunate, and I think a very good working relationship with the School District, is that they recognize that that part of the city is one of our few opportunities to be able to do larger-scale stormwater management. Our plans over the next several years through the Stormwater Fund include doing some infrastructure that connects to the Groffs Run, daylighting and green infrastructure installation that was completed about a year and a half or two years ago. And we, they were aware of what we had planned, but they had this imminent need to upgrade that particular playing field area. And so we had to put our forces together and accelerate this subcomponent of the larger-scale stormwater management. And we were able to successfully do that, working in tandem with them and their consultants, to make sure that the construction could work on their schedule and still provide us the part of the infrastructure that will be useful, not only for the immediate, but for the longer-term, larger-scale stormwater management plan.
Thank you very much. Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Once the field is installed and the infrastructure is in place, later on down the road, the connection that's, that's going to be made from that particular area to Goff Road Run, is there any possibility that, that any of that construction will disrupt the surface of their field?
No, that's a very, very good question. It has been engineered in such a way that we will not have to disturb the field. So the, the engineering of the field and of the, of the stormwater retention tank is integral to ensure that it does not have to be disturbed at some future date. If there are repairs to the field that are necessary, because a, an artificial turf has a particular useful life, even that will not disturb or necessitate any changes to the stormwater management. And the connectors that are hopefully supporting the rest of the stormwater infrastructure will already have been put in place in this first phase.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Craig. Other council comments?
Council President. Go ahead. I have a question regarding the increase of the water, and would that be all-inclusive? In other words, we've raised it, does that already include this project?
Yes, it does.
So there won't be any additional for the constituents or the residents added on?
This is already, this is part of what is budgeted under the stormwater fee. So the stormwater, there's a number of projects somewhere in the neighborhood of, at last count, something like 161 stormwater green infrastructure projects, many of which have been completed, but it's part of our ongoing, longer-term capital stormwater management plan. This was moved forward, and a couple of other things were kind of deferred because of the timing, but it is part of what we do out of our stormwater management fee. If, for any reason, there needed to be an additional enhancement, we continue to go aggressively after grants to take care of those kinds of other enhancements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ahmed.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Director. That was a very informative, especially in regards to what it would cost to handle that amount of stormwater on that nine-acre plot. My question is more about the post-construction operation and maintenance agreement between the city and the School District. If you could just elaborate on that a little bit, you know, what costs can we anticipate in the post-construction and maintaining this stormwater project in the future?
Thank you very much. Just as with any other green infrastructure that the city is responsible for, we budget for the operation and maintenance of that green infrastructure, whatever ongoing regular maintenance, confirming that it is operating properly, that the drainage is taking place and giving us the performance it has been designed for. Those costs are borne by the city. That's part of what the stormwater management fee also covers for the rest of our green infrastructure as well. The city or the School District of Lancaster will be taking care of maintenance of the, of the field and of the turf, but anything related to the stormwater and stormwater management is ours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ahmed. Any further comments from council? And comments from the public?
I do have questions about the post, darling, 200 blocks south of San Street. About the post-care and the cost that will be incurred on this city. Now, I know as a, as a, I guess we can say a developer, we have to address stormwater management to build a building, and we're responsible for the upkeep, we're responsible for addressing it and paying. I'm kind of like lost and need some help, is why the School District is not responsible for building and being responsible for their stormwater and their stormwater management? I mean, I know they got enough money and bonds to cover their construction that the taxpayer has to pay, so I'm wondering why that was not considered in the construction project, that the city feels we have to take on some of that responsibility.
Director Campbell, am I correct in saying that the nine acres that this covers does not only encompass the School District property?
That is correct. So, so we did, in fact, consider what you're, what you're asking about, but this is stormwater that the, that the School District of Lancaster does not have to manage. This is stormwater that the city wants to manage in order to take care of not only some of our, our flooding situations, but the excess water in the several blocks that are just south of McCaskey, and that, whose stormwater feeds into that, into the McCaskey campus. So this is actually, much of this stormwater, the vast majority of this stormwater, is not stormwater that the School District would ordinarily have had to manage. We recognize, and they recognize as well, that it's, there are certain open spaces and fields of opportunity that, that lend themselves to being able to help the city manage some of its stormwater. This is one of those opportunities to have taken advantage. So it is, we are not, the city is, or the School District is actually managing whatever stormwater it needs to. It is an integrated system, but the volume that we're talking about in the retention tank is, in large part, the volume that is not on the McCaskey campus, but goes to the campus, and that therefore always would have been the city's responsibility.
So then we're not talking about Wickersham? I thought that Councilwoman Walsh said we're talking about the Wickersham School. This is not that area?
Yes, it is.
It is that.
Oh, okay, so it is the School District property?
Yes, they're doing us a great favor by allowing us to use the, the underground storage underneath a field that they were already planning to build, for us to manage stormwater that's coming off of the streets that is directed, you know, it's downhill toward that, that field that's behind Wickersham. And, yes.
If, if it was only the site of Wickersham, they might have had to manage, I'm using a number just to make it simple, 100,000 gallons of water. We're asking for them to, for that site to manage not just the 100,000 that's on that site, but an additional 900,000 gallons. That is not their responsibility. And so they are partnering with us by making that site available to us, and we've entered into a cost-sharing. They would ordinarily and only have been responsible for managing 100,000 gallons, and we would have had to spend several times what it will cost us to manage the remaining 900,000.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Any further comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Our next resolution, number 33. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster approving adoption of an amendment to the Act 537, official sewage facilities plan for the City of Lancaster.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. We have done these several times, but for the record, the Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection require the municipality to adopt an official sewage facilities plan, providing for services adequate to prevent contamination of the waters of the Commonwealth and/or environmental health hazards, hazards with sewage waste, and to amend when necessary to assure there is adequate sewage removal. The business in, in question is, has proposed the development of a parcel of land identified as Lombardo Properties LDP, and needs to have adequate sewage usage.
Thank you very much, Council Craig. Are there any comments from council on the resolution? Comments on the public, from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
We now go to resolution number 34. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, authorizing the filing of, of the Commonwealth Financing Authority, Act 13, application for funding in the amount of $250,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Walsh.
Thank you, Council President. We've seen many of these resolutions come forward in regards to supporting grant applications for Public Works and other agencies. This is no different from many of those. But after reading the committee minutes, what I realized is, this has been an absolute patchwork of different funding sources, and this grant is to secure the remaining financing that's needed in the amount of $250,000. And from what I can tell, this is a noble effort to get the Pocket Park completed.
Thank you, Council Walsh. Any further comments from council on the resolution? Comments from the public? Ms. Byrd.
Darling Byrd, I'm just wondering, have the residents agreed for the park? I know this is something that's been going on for a long time. I know the Pocket Park has changed hands and ownership. I guess it was the city, someone else, then the city took it to create a park, then they went back to talk to the residents, and the residents didn't want a park, they want parking, that have parking spaces. And I know this has been going back and forth for a long time, and I'm just wondering, have you talked to those residents, and is this something that they are wanting in their community?
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Director Campbell.
Yes, thank you very, very much for this opportunity, again, to describe this situation. Yes, it is a case that the community does want this to be a park. It had been, as, as Ms. Byrd accurately describes, it had changed, the property had changed hands a couple of times, and in an effort to make it a park that was doing everything for everybody, before Colleton Park was completed, it was, it was in a period of contention about what should be included. Should it be, should it include a basketball court, which could only accommodate a half-court? Should it be playground area, infant playgrounds, passive seating, et cetera, et cetera? Once Colleton Park was, was completed, it was clear that some of the active recreation needs were not necessary. It is, it is definitely the case that there is a need for parking in that particular area, but the immediate community and the immediate property owners very much wanted this to be a park. We changed gears and worked, engaged, re-engaged with the community to get together a different idea of what can be done. Should it be primarily a, an active recreation space, or should it be for two different cohorts of children? Similarly, we recognized that there is a stormwater opportunity, which gave us an infusion of an additional $100,000 of stormwater management funds to be in that particular location. And then we worked with the public, the Trust for Public Land as an entity that could leverage other outside grant money to be able to make this particular piece work. We've, we've continued to work with that community very, very closely over the course of the last year, in a community design effort to have a park that we believe is, not only addresses their needs, but reflects the concerns that they raise to us, and has been reviewed and approved by the members of that community.
Thank you, Director Campbell.
If I may.
Council Diaz.
Director Campbell.
I spoke too soon.
Real quick, the, there was, there's an access to the bathroom in that park area. My question would be, there is no, no disabled access to get into one of the bathrooms.
You're, you're talking about Colleton Park, not Beaver Street?
No, I'm talking about Beaver Street. Is, is there no bathroom in that area?
There's no proposed restroom for that, for that park.
Okay, then they must, they must have given me the wrong information. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any further comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Resolution number 37. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, recognizing the City of Lancaster's commitment to welcome to our immigrant community, as evidenced by its recertification as a welcoming- city by the National Welcome America Initiative, and reaffirming its commitment to safety and equitable access to city services.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the resolution. This is through Public Safety. Councilor Diaz.
The resolution is basically providing safety for the immigrants and refugees and to welcome them to Lancaster City. I also believe that there is someone here from CASA that would like to address council and had requested to have comments prior to and wasn't able to. So Mr. Davila, the Director of Council, if you want to address us.
Mr. Avale, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Sarachi and Lancaster City Council members. My name is Daniel Albaia. I am the director of State Director of CASA, CASA in Action. CASA is a national nonprofit member-led grassroots organization with over 149,000 lifetime members. We work with to empower Latinos, immigrant, black and brown communities, and also working class members across 46 states. During the city council meeting held on April 11th, CASA discussed the Lancaster Trust Act. Again, the Trust Act is a bill that partly discusses eliminating the collaboration between city officials and ICE, but is so much more than this. We have this part of the bill seems to have overshadowed the other great provisions within the Trust Act. We have mentioned the many benefits of passing the Trust Act and have shown the risks immigrants face in cities where this act or similar laws are not put in place. I shared a story about Hazelton and the then-mayor Lou Beretta, who passed a law prohibiting immigrants from living in Hazelton and made it illegal for landlords to rent homes to undocumented immigrants. This was found to be unconstitutional by a federal judge and later overturned. Butler County recently reversed policies that once made Butler County a sanctuary county, and there are many more examples of why the Lancaster's Trust Act must be completely codified. The reversal of these examples underscore the need for codification. The Trust Act ensures that immigrants, regardless of their status, can use identification issued by state government, foreign government, and/or by a nonprofit organization such as CASA, and not be subject to higher level of scrutiny or treated differently. It ensures that within 48 hours of receiving an administrative warrant, court order, subpoena, or other civil immigrant immigration request to detain or provide information about an individual, city officials or employees will advise the subject of such a request. It ensures that no city resources will be utilized in participation of federal registries that track citizenship, immigration status, race, national or ethnic origin, language proficiency, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, disability, or age. We want to reassure immigrants, regardless of status, that they can report domestic violence or other situations without fear of their information being shared with ICE. With guidance and approval from CASA members, CASA supported the initial welcoming city certification and recertification because CASA believes that immigrants, regardless of their immigration status, deserve to be treated with dignity and respect and be afforded equitable opportunities. We understand, as seen here with the resolution, that this resolution, I believe, is a response to the Trust Act proposal. CASA and its community members greatly appreciate the work that you have done to address the needs of the immigrant community and all of Lancaster City. CASA also asks that before you present this resolution today that you reconsider introducing it and table it for a later date to allow CASA and the city solicitor, all of city council, and Mayor Sarachi to to have a full discussion with the goal of passing the Trust Act in its entirety with some modifications to the language, or that the resolution include language that explicitly mentions that this resolution is the first step towards codification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll take any council comments on the resolution at this time. Excuse me.
Council President, if I may.
Council Royo.
First, I want to thank Mr. Avale for speaking, and thank you for your advocacy efforts. I think really appreciate CASA's intention around the Trust Act. I think it brought up a very valid conversation, and you're right, we wouldn't be having this discussion if you guys didn't bring it to our attention. So thank you for that. I do want to say that this resolution does not prohibit further discussion around other aspects of the Trust Act that we want to move forward, or any policy that we want to continue to evolve or enhance moving forward. I think earlier today, even as an example with the short-term rental ordinance, I think the city hall is very adamant about looking at policy and looking at how ways to improve it, and this is just one first step. So I think taking a tabling this resolution would actually be a step backwards. In fact, I think it's a step forward in making sure that we are continuing this conversation, acknowledging some of the work that we have been doing as a city, making it a welcoming, certified welcoming city, a trauma-informed city, and then making sure that specifically cooperation around ICE or with ICE with our police department is in the process of being codified in police policies. So I just want to say that to council and to Mr. Avale that this is a step forward, and it doesn't prohibit any of those conversations from happening, that we can still continue to have have those conversations, and in fact, welcome them, and happy to participate in those with you.
Thank you, Councilor Royo. Yes, I think that that's an important point, and I will say that I am appreciative that this resolution also gives us some specific deliverables in terms of continuing to serve as a welcoming city, codifying written policy and practices of not intervening with federal immigration matters in police policy, and having them publicly releasable by a specific date, which is March 31, 2024, which is the anticipated end of the accreditation product process for our police department. So we don't have anything in writing up until this point that 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 sets those goals. And so I do appreciate that this includes that as well. And I do agree that this is a not a not an end, but a place to continue from.
Council Diaz.
President, what I'd like to do on behalf of CASA is to table it to our next meeting. I do believe that there was over 200 members in CASA that reached out, and they would like to have the opportunity to speak with the solicitor. And I think we need to continue supporting our community. If they're asking and they haven't received, then I really do believe that as council members, that we do do what the community wants. I mean, too many times, we're pushing all these agendas, and nobody's listening to the community. They're the taxpayers as well. And I just feel that the solicitor has not responded to the director, and I think it's time for someone to at least reach out to him, discuss the situation, so like that we can move forward with it.
Thank you, Council Diaz.
If I may.
Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you, Mr. Avale, for being here tonight, and I will be the first to tell you that we got off on the wrong foot for a variety of reasons. But CASA itself made the issue coming to council and sharing stories of two people who had terrible interactions with law enforcement and ICE here, as if they had happened in the City of Lancaster. And I have to tell you, there were consequences to that. A lot of people were confused because we have had a longstanding policy, noncooperation policy with the police. And I just want to reiterate that again tonight. The City of Lancaster has a longstanding practice of non-cooperation with ICE. We are going to codify these policies related to noncooperation related to ICE, which were the which were the signature piece of what you were sharing in written documents and what was being shared in a press conference out front with testimony from two women that was not vetted. You yourself sent me a note saying that they, after a deeper dive, you realized that those stories did not take place or did not involve Lancaster City Police. We had Chief Mendez here reasserting, re-establishing that the city has a policy during his entire tenure as a police chief, as a police officer, and now police chief, of noncooperation with ICE. So it is it is true that we started this conversation off by confusing the very residents that we are trying to protect by calling forth these examples, when in fact, they involve county government. And I'm a little sensitive to our police bureau being called out in a way that is not true, as we have been working to rebuild the relationship with the police bureau. And I'm a little sensitive that the Chair of the Public Safety Committee also didn't have a conversation with our Chief of Police about this and having more context about the police policies that are happening. We are on a journey as a welcoming committee, as a welcoming city, and this resolution further codifies that we are going to continue to become continue to be a welcoming city. That process requires in-depth, multi-day analysis of our policies and procedures to ensure that we are in fact doing all of the things that CASA wants as well. You participated with us in that process, and we appreciate that. And as Councilor Royo mentioned, this is a continuation of a journey that we will continue to take, and I would encourage that we continue to have this conversation. There are best practices, and Zaira Falu is here tonight, who is responsible for our welcoming city certification. She can speak to the efforts that we're making related to public safety. And I think that your members should feel assured that when they're interacting with the Lancaster City Police, that anyone, regardless of immigration status, we all agree, we want everyone to feel safe. We want them to report a crime if it happened to them. We want them to be not fearful about coming forward as a witness if they saw a crime. This is very important to the fabric of our of our community and public safety, is our number one priority here. So again, I just want to say that we do not and have not cooperated with ICE. That is going to continue. I know that you know that. I know that we are going to continue to work together to additionally codify practices. We are going to continue to support these efforts in CASA statewide. We think this is very important, and we will continue together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sarachi. Excuse me.
Council President, if I may.
Councilor Men.
Just want to thank you again, sir, for your advocacy and continued advocacy. And I do not believe that us passing this resolution would prohibit further meetings with the solicitor, and I will make sure that I do everything in my part to set up that meeting with folks from CASA and the solicitor's office, so we can continue to be partners and make sure that we look at the other the other parts of the Trust Act that you have brought up and mentioned. But I do think that this is going to be a continual with our welcoming recertification, continue to work with the advocacy work that you guys are doing. But I do think that this would assure you and your members that we are codifying the practices that we're already doing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Men.
If I may.
Council Diaz.
Just to clarify, I did speak with Chief Mendez, just to let you know.
Thank you. Further comment from council? Comments from the public? And Mr. Avale?
Yeah, if I may, I just wanted to to Mayor Sarachi to publicly apologize for for the mistakes that we made in in sharing those stories and inaccuracies.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I, you know, I I'm confident, you know, as I said, the members, we're a member-led organization, and, you know, our members, not our members, I'm using that word, but we're saying it in that in that in that way, but CASA's members who live here trust, you know, where they live at, they're they want to be here, they feel welcome here, and hence the reason that we played a part in, you know, the welcoming city. I just, one of the biggest things for me is I just want to be able to take back to them that I feel confident that I can still have confidence in them, that this isn't the end of it, that we can continue to have this conversation around the Trust Act. I mean, it's it's done, it's done wonders in in some of the other regions that that CASA is at in Maryland and Virginia, and it's a totally different world for them, the way they, you know, how they live, how confident they feel walking on the street. They 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 feel that they are truly part of of their community there, and I just really want to solidify that here and just take that back. I appreciate, I mean, I I'm confident that we're going to continue to have a conversation about this, so I appreciate everything that you've done and and look forward to working with you all in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avale, and I do appreciate working on our shared goals, and I want to assure you that they're shared. So thank you. Ms. London.
Hi, everybody. Dana London, 200 block in North Broad Street. I just wanted you to know that I agree with Diaz, Ms. Diaz, Councilman Diaz, to table this, because I think there's a lot more discussion that we can have, because there's a lot of uncertainty. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would I would also say to council about tabling, because we always make these decisions, and we know that things don't go forth. I mean, I can stand up here and speak of things that councils have said, and nothing went forward. And I think this is serious. And I, you know, I'm in the southeast area, and we have a lot of undocumented residents living down there, and they do live in fear. I know people on Broad Street that are scared of ISIS coming and knocking on our doors all the time. It is a reality. And I heard the mayor say in 2024 that the police would be accredited. I mean, we're living in 2023. Do people have to live in fear to 2024 before we get something on the books that say that our police are working with ISIS and not working with ISIS?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I, my name is Zaira Falu. I am the Language Services Coordinator that also oversees the Welcoming City Certification, and I just wanted to thank our leadership and you council members for taking on this initiative. And I just wanted to echo to Mayor Sarachi's comments related to that the Welcoming City is very certification is very intricate, it's very complex, and that we will continue to work upon and continue to improve into this work, that the passing of this resolution tonight does not mean that future conversations would be denied, or that future new communications could happen within the organization and the community members. I personally care, this is something that is personal to me. I have friends, and I understand what Ms. Bird is saying. And so I just wanted to also appreciate Mr. Albaia for being here and continuing to advocate, and reassure that the work of welcoming continues to be improved and expand, and that further communications with CASA will continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council President, can I ask one question, please?
Yes.
Mr. Avale, is is this an opportunity? I'm just wondering, has the Trust Act been passed in any other certified welcoming cities?
In Philadelphia has been one, and then also in.
No, a certified welcoming city, certified welcoming through Welcoming America.
It would, I think that's more of a question for, I know it's happened in in Maryland. It would, I think that's more of a question for, I know it's happened in Maryland. I'm not sure out of all of the jurisdictions that...
The reason, the reason why I ask is I think that there are, there are other elements beyond what are in the trust policy that we are implementing as part of certified welcoming and our certification. And there are elements that overlap with the trust policy. And perhaps this is an opportunity for us to crosswalk the welcoming city requirements, which continue to evolve. So just when I think we're at the cusp of like, reaching the highest level, even though we are at a, I don't remember Zaira where we are, but we are at a nationally high level in terms of where we are, in terms of our certification, our policies and practices. That continues to evolve over time. Welcoming America standard continues to evolve over time. CASA's Trust Act is embedded there. And I think that why I'm asking this question and we should do some homework together is that maybe this is an opportunity to blend these two efforts in a way that is advantageous to what CASA's policy goals are, because I understand this is part of a much larger national initiative that you have as an organization. And so nothing about our practices are fundamentally changing. We're continuing to codify and advance those practices through tonight's resolution and our ongoing work as part of Welcoming America and the conversations that will continue. So that's why I asked. Maybe there's a marriage here that we need to figure out better.
Right. If I may respond, I just want to instill in that confidence in the members and in people, you know, the experience when I gave the example of Hazelton, when, you know, then Laura Beretta came in and, you know, scrapped what the previous mayor did and said, you know, we don't want immigrants here anymore. Same with Butler County, when that mayor came in after, you know, residents felt, undocumented immigrants felt safe and secure and, you know, throughout all of this sanctuary policies. I think that's, or policies. I think just to make a distinction between resolution and the Trust Act is that the Trust Act wants to ensure that this is something that's codified, put into law, whereas resolutions and policies, although they do hold some weight, they're still not law. And I think that's the difference and the distinction that's going to help members feel more confident.
And I would just say that it's both of those things, right? A policy without practice is insufficient and a practice without policy is insufficient. And I would also just say that at any time, there could be a mayor in the future or council members in the future that decide to take this up and to do away with it. I think that that would, that effort in this community would be met with stiff resistance. And we are elected officials that reflect back to the community what they want to see. And we have elevated ourselves as a welcoming community, not because of the work of my administration or this particular council, but because it's in our DNA. It goes back to the 1600s in which this community was founded. And I think you saw it tonight with the recognition of our earliest Jewish settlers that have deep history in the city, our AAPI community, our, we celebrate Hispanic heritage Juneteenth. This is the fabric of our community and I think that we reflect that back because the residents are saying that to us. So again, we can continue this conversation. I really appreciate your apology. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
And just to clarify, according to CASA, there was 602 counties and I'm not sure I would gather that that was across the United States that did go ahead and pass a Trust Act. That's what Maria had forward to me.
And grown, yeah. Just to your point, we're physically in four states, we have physical offices, but we have membership in 46 different states and then Puerto Rico too. So we do, you know, a lot of the services work, but we also do a lot of policy and advocacy. You know, the rest is the organization, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that question may be an important jumping off point to future discussions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public on the resolution? Mr. Sims.
Joel Sims, 312 East Walnut Street. I have no comment whatsoever regarding the resolution, but I do want to say that I've lived a lot of places in my life, traveling all around. I've traveled in, lived a lot of places. And I would say that I'm most proud of Lancaster for its welcoming of refugees and immigrants. And I love to tell people that. And I love the diversity of people. I just hired a part-time woman from Afghanistan who studied one year in architecture. Have some people I provided housing for that escaped the war in Ukraine. You know, I have a hair braiding family that does African hair braiding and they consider me their adopted uncle and that's probably one of the things I'm most proud of, you know, it's just the diversity in Lancaster. And so I just commend you, this is hard work and I don't want to get into the politics and different, you know, amendments and applications and all that, but overall, I'm very proud that Lancaster welcomes immigrants and refugees.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment? Just checking. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Men.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Ms. Walsh.
Aye.
President Baker.
Aye. Thank you very much. That concludes our legislative agenda this evening and it will take us into our second public comment period. It's open for comment on issues not previously addressed on the agenda. Again, comments are limited to no longer than three minutes per speaker and please begin with your name and block of residence. Are there any public comments this evening? Ms. Bird.
Yes. I wasn't able to be here the last council meeting over the ARPA funds and South End to get awarded $250,000. I do have a concern though. I remember that when Ms. Walsh, when you was appointed to council, one of the things that was required of you was not to participate in the ARPA funds because of conflicts. And you agreed not to vote on that. But we have had ARPA funds with issues of conflict, whether the mayor's husband's organization was given money and she sat on the committee. Jess King's husband is over another organization, was given money and she also sat on the committee. Most recently, Amanda and Jamie, council members, you voted on the Price Elementary School, ARPA funds, and you represent the board. And I'm just want to challenge council, you know, if you're going to be transparency in the decisions that you make and you do, then you need to look at this. I appreciate the fact that for the CBG money, Mr. Aurora, you declined to, you know, abstain from voting on that because assets was involved. You should have done the same for the ARPA funds. You both sit on boards and agreed to give the money to that organization. And I'm not saying that it wasn't fair, I'm saying what it looks like, it doesn't look good. And I think we want a council that's going to represent the city, represent this opportunity of the money that we got, to look good and to be fair about what happened. And I just want to challenge yous to do better on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. And I'll just follow up because I feel that, that the presentation that you're making, Ms. Bird, implies that somehow we are receiving financial remuneration in some way. My husband is a board member who receives no financial remuneration from Habitat for Humanity. The implications, this is a small town. We are all working in these areas. The Rec Commission is by ordinance that there are board members that are from Lancaster City Council because that's an intermunicipal authority between the school district, the city and Lancaster Township. And so I just want to be very clear for the record that we all have reviewed with our solicitor, any potential conflicts of interest that relate to remuneration. And so there is none. No one is gilding our back pocket with money. In fact, there are other questions about the organizations and how those monies are being spent and that will be a requirement for the ARPA reporting. And so I just want to be very clear with you.
And I did not say that you were pocketing money.
But that is what is implied and I just want to be clear.
I want to come back to your comment, Ms. Bird, and allow you to finish your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I did not imply that. I'm telling you, it's what it looks like. And I'm not saying that's what it's doing, I'm saying make your actions clear and be transparent so that the community does not think like that. I didn't say you were pocketing money, nor did I say I believed that you were. I'm saying what it appears to look like. And I think that as a council and as a representation of the city, we need to make sure we don't put that appearance out there. We already have a lot of confusion about the representation in the Southeast, whether or not we're being represented or how we feel we're not being represented. And when things like this happen, it just makes that perception even more. I'm here to say, you know, watch what you do so we don't get these perceptions.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
If I may, Counsel President.
Counselor Royal.
I just want to make a comment that I take very personally when someone challenges or questions my integrity. I serve on the Lancaster Rec Board as a member of council, as Mayor Serrati mentioned, as a requirement of an ordinance. It is a nonprofit. I don't receive any money, I don't receive any funds from it. In fact, it's all volunteer service that I proudly give hours and hours every month to this organization for years, even before being on council, as a way of paying it forward because of an organization that gave back to me as a child growing up here in this city. If I have the opportunity to give an award that's going to benefit hundreds and thousands of students and children in this community, I would do it tenfold every single time I have that opportunity. So I just want to make that clear. When you say a conflict of interest...
Right.
Let me finish. When you say a conflict of interest, it does imply that there's a financial conflict of interest. And I take that extremely seriously in this role as an elected official.
And I...
So for someone that received 250,000 of ARPA dollars, please be assured that transparency is important and accountability is important.
And I believe that.
And you will be on the hook for taxpayers as well, Ms. Bird.
Exactly. And we will be on the hook. But it's just, you know, it's a shame that you can feel and really think that I can't come up here and make a statement about what it seems and you take that so personal. I hear from you all the time. You know, I didn't take it personal when you didn't speak to me yesterday on Monday, you know. So, you know, this back and forth, this is not personal.
Ms. Bird, we are well over three minutes on a public comment.
I'm just telling you what it looks like and what the community's saying and you should be able to hear that without taking it personal. And if you didn't feel it in your heart to say, I'm not going to vote on that because I sit on the board, that's your decision. But it's also my responsibility as an advocate to come to council and let you know what people see and what people are thinking about that.
Thank you, Ms. Bird.
If I may, Mr. President.
Counsel Diaz.
I think what I'm hearing and what I have heard is that we see a lot of people that are on council or part of the community, that it looks like it's biased. And that's what I think that she is referring to. It's not the first person that said it. And as elected official, we have to get used to the fact that people are going to tell us things that may feel like it hurts, but it's not personal. We're here to represent our community, we're here to represent the taxpayers. We have to listen to our taxpayers. A lot of times, we don't. So they have the right to come here and address us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Diaz. Are there further public comments this evening? Hearing none, then we'll move to the report of the mayor.
One quick thing, Neighborhood Month continues this week with our block party that will be at Milburn Park tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 and I look forward to welcoming you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Vett. Report of the President of Council. My report is also brief this evening. It is a reminder that as we move into unbelievably the summer months, starting in June, council will meet once for our committees and once for a regular meeting. There's no second meeting on the schedule. Of course, if there's anything that comes up that's time sensitive, that will change and those meetings will be appropriately advertised. But as it stands now, our schedule is once per month for June, July and August. That concludes my report. I'll take any additional council comments at this time.
Counsel President, if I may.
Counsel Ahmed.
Thank you, Counsel President. On Monday of last week, I was able to join in Harrisburg, council members from the city of Philadelphia, as well as school board members and township supervisors from across the region. We were able to lobby our elected officials in Harrisburg for needed changes, although we did not all have the same challenges, whether the city of Philadelphia was going through something that the city of Reading wasn't. It was a really good opportunity for elected officials from across the Commonwealth to be able to share ideas and advocate to our state partners on the changes that we need to help our municipalities back home. There will be some more opportunities coming up and I will keep Counsel President abreast as well as the rest of council so that we could be joined in our efforts to advocate at the state level. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Counsel Ahmed. Any further council comments? Hearing none and having reached the conclusion of our agenda, here a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.